And we are at nine o'clock. All right, okay. So I'll open this meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the Board of Supervisors and call it to order. As customary, we'll conduct a moment of silence. And did either of you have one? If not, I have one. So I have one for Homer Webster H.W. Wilson of Nice. He was born in November eighteenth, nineteen twenty-eight, and passed on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Homer was a sergeant and a veteran of the Korean War. He was in the artillery, field artillery. And he attained three Bronze Stars. He also worked for thirty-eight years in civil service for the state and the federal government. He leaves behind his son Levert, his great-grandson Byron, and three brothers, Audrey Wilson, Glenn Webster, and Jonathan. Two sisters-in-law, or two sisters, Octavia Smith and Evelyn Wilson. Son-in-law, two son-in-laws and two brothers-in-law. And so we'll definitely miss Homer. It's always unfortunate when we lose these veterans from Korean and World Wars, World War II, because that's a sign that our seniors and elders from the good old days are, that wealth of knowledge and wealth of wisdom is leaving, you know? So just wanted to highlight that. Supervisor Sabatier, can you lead us in a pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any? No? All right. Number five, approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial, however, they can be pulled for further discussion, and they can be pulled either by the Board of Supervisors or anyone from the public. So we'll go ahead and open it up to the board. Are there any that need to be pulled? And I know for, it's five point two and five point nine so far. Are there any others that need to be pulled aside from that? No? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public and see if there is any. And there's a hand up in the chambers. Yes, please.
Joan Moss, five point one.
Okay. And five point one. And I'm going to look back in Zoom and see if there's any others, hands up. I don't see any, so I will bring it back to the board for further action on the consent. Sir? Oh, that's public input. That'll come up in a little bit, so, okay. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items five point three through five point eight and five ten through five eleven.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, three zero. And so let's see, we're at nine oh four. Which one would be fairly quick?
Seven point two.
Okay, let's do seven point two. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Lower Lake Cemetery District. And let's see, we have one applicant, and Moke, this is in your district, and so, wow. If there's any questions, we'll go from there, but if not...
No questions for me.
So I'll open it up to the public briefly and see if there's anyone that has a comment or a question on this item for the Lower Lake Cemetery District. Not hearing or seeing any, we can go ahead and bring it back to the board for further action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Mahia Wilhelm to the Lower Lake Cemetery District.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and motion carries. So we are at nine oh five. Let's see. Yeah, sorry. Made a comment about... All right. Are any of the consent agenda items quick or probably not?
You got fifteen seconds.
Oh, okay, good. Fifteen seconds, and then we'll move on to public input. I didn't know you had a timer like that, Bruno.
That's if we're on the same clock.
We are at nine oh six. So next on the agenda is public input. And public input is open for the public to come up and state something that's not on the current agenda. However, we'll give you three minutes after you state your name for the record. Just know that none of the board members can comment or give insight as to what you're bringing up. However, if there's something that we can help you with in our districts, or if there's a director we can connect you with, we'll do so as well. So as of right now, I have one public input request. Andre Guzec. If you'd like to come up, state your name for the record, and we'll start the clock. Give you three minutes.
My name is Andre Guzec. So I'd like to want you to speak because I think you can make a difference in this item here. I'm the new owner of the Mount Satellina Vineyard in Middletown. And according to my vineyard manager, we employ at one time or another about fifty people. And, you know, shortly before I purchased, and actually after I did, I met upstairs here, and I was advised to apply for an agricultural preserve. I prepared a complete packet, gave it in July, in June, sorry. And I'm told you're not doing that anymore, and I'd like you to maybe reconsider. Here's my challenge, I'm losing money this year. The payment of power I crop is less than what I paid to farm it, and I've just got a sixty-two thousand dollar property tax bill, which I have to pay. And by the way, I actually paid less money than my predecessor sold for the land, so that should be reassessed at some point. And I believe the main reason he sold and went to Florida is because of that property tax. As a matter of fact, I did more research, I've been in contact with U.C. Davis, and they sent me recent figures. And for, and I'm glad to share this with you, and for vineyards, my size, and recently, it's more about like three hundred dollars a acre. And I'm paying eight hundred, so I'm way above that. So it's really hard for me to grow grapes and survive and make a profit. So I've read into the Williamson Act, and I believe that's the very reason it was put into place, so that agricultural properties are not burdened with excessive property tax. And the reality, actually, this piece of land decreased value since two thousand and sixteen, while everything else went up like crazy in real estate. So I think that that's another sign. So while the county thinks maybe hanging on to this tax is a good thing for your coffers, I think it's a short-term thing, because it's gonna, it's gonna kill the economy and it's gonna kill my farm. And so I hope my plea is met with a positive response. And I still have the application right there, if you will consider it. Thank you so much for your attention.
I do have a quick question. When did you buy the farm?
January twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two.
Two thousand and twenty-two?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I will be in contact with you.
Oh, thank you so much.
I will be in contact with you, and I'll come out and see you at the farm.
Excellent. I look forward to your visit. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right. Are there any other people in the chambers that would like to come up for public input? Okay, look online. And give a couple of seconds to see if there's any hands up.
I raised my hand, sorry.
Bruno! All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and close public input at this time and move on to our next item, which is at nine fifteen. So we're going to go ahead and fill in something in between then. It's nine oh nine. And let's see. There we go, five one. Approval of continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality. Joan, this is something you like to pull, so we'll go ahead and let you come to the microphone, and we'll give you three minutes.
As you know, I'm concerned about trees. And since Supervisor Pyska is not present, and she's been going to all the meetings, maybe we should wait until she's present, she can answer my questions. Last week, I invited her to read an article I had written about the latest hearing, about the latest day at the supervisors. And she had an interesting statement that I wanted to ask her about publicly. It was that the funds that you talked about for five point eight were being reimbursed, and that they were part of an Office of Emergency Grant that was already present. And I didn't know about that. I didn't hear it during the meeting. And I don't think it's fair to ask her about this publicly. And I also want to say that the public, I believe, needs to know about trees. Instead of just passing a proclamation in the consent agenda, I think we need to all be aware of what the wherethes say, and what they mean, and what it means for us as communities who have already complained about the PG&E vegetation management activity that is going on. Thank you. We're getting confused, and we need direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
I'd like this to be a member of the public agenda, and I'd like people to be able to stand up and speak to the issue and know what it means. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Did you want to comment, Supervisor Simon?
You know, today is just a formality. If I'm not wrong, and I can be corrected here, is that it needs to be continued on a basis. So today, we do need to act on it to continue it. And obviously, this is, just like when it was explained, and it was passed, is for the opportunity for us to bring funding to the county to work on the pervasive tree mortality issues that we are having. It's very clear to the public that it is going on. All you got to do is drive from Lower Lake to Lakeport and look at the mountains. So we'll continue this at this point. Joan, hopefully you can get the answers that you want, but we'll continue moving forward with this.
Right. And I think too, I know in the last meeting, Joan, you were invited to the Cawbury Council, where they discuss this very frequently. So I encourage you to attend that as well, but we'll go from there. At this time, I'll go ahead and see if there's anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item. And if not, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Sometimes you just need to repeat. The tree mortality issue is based on a natural disaster with drought, and the PG&E issue is based on human action, not drought. And so this is all about trees that are dying on a natural way because of our drought and because of the change in the climate that we're experiencing. And so this is only to continue the emergency based on suggestions from the state that access to funding in order to help us with the drought-stricken trees. This would help us obtain some of the funds, and we already approved some of the steps taken in order to get to those points.
Joan, I already closed public input, so...
The public information says that it's more than just the drought. It's the valley fire. This is new information that's coming to us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and Supervisor Simon?
I'm ready to move forward.
Let's go.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency due to pervasive tree mortality.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we got nine fourteen, our first item is at nine fifteen. Yep, we're at nine fifteen. So this item is a presentation of redesigned County of Lake website. With that, it looks like we have Matthew, is it, yeah, is it Matthew Rothstein or Rothstein who's going to present this item?
Yes, good morning, Board. It's an honor to be with you once again this morning, and thank you for this opportunity to present the newly redesigned County of Lake website. So I wanted to just to let you know that throughout two thousand and twenty-two, county leaders and staff have been hard at work to procure a new content management system, which is the software that helps support preparation of our website content. And the newly redesigned Civic Plus supported website launched this morning, still at HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.lakcountyca.gov. So I'm going to just pull up the website a little bit here on my screen, just so I can show you the new design. And members of the public that accessed our website this morning will similarly notice that it looks different now. So just wanted to give a sense of what people can expect now, and also what is to come in the coming weeks. So what people can expect, what residents who accessed our website can expect now is a new design, more standardized, a newly designed page with more standardized navigation, which is similar to other government websites, security enhancements over our previous content management system, improved ability for departments to directly create and update their own content, much improved public access to advisory board and commission agendas and minutes, greater search engine optimization for posted content, and standardized accessibility features. So you'll see here on the homepage, we have some navigation buttons here at the top. Our agendas and minutes, and this agendas and minutes button goes to a new agendas and minutes center, which includes the board agendas for all of our advisory boards, and also links to the Board of Supervisors agendas can be posted here as well. You'll notice that there is a link, there's language and a link at the top that still directs the public to our Granicus Agenda Center. That is still the primary location where our agendas and other agenda-related materials are housed. But the Agenda Center does provide one easy place where people can go to find links to any of the advisory board and other committee meetings that are posted in the Agenda Center, whereas those were in different pages and some was on the website previously. So that access is much, much easier at this point. So I wanted to, before we go much further, I wanted to also point out that many of the banner images, and I'm sorry, it's taking some time to load, many of the banner images that are used behind the top menus and things, the really elegant pictures of Lake County, were captured by Karen Pavone, and we were grateful to have contracted with her to use these images in our redesign. And also wanted to highlight that our Information Technology Director, Shane French, has really been central throughout the procurement and redesign process, and wanted to express appreciation that each step he's worked with people to ensure that the needed actions were well-understood and tasks were manageably paced. And we know and expect that with any time you have a major redesign project with a website, when that information cuts over, so to speak, there are some links that need to be adjusted, there's content that needs to be updated that was updated since that cut-over date where the content was automatically brought over. So there will be some adjustments that are coming in the coming weeks, and that's actually the reason that Shane is not doing this presentation today himself. Shane is currently hard at work, you know, doing fixes to the webpages. So that process will be ongoing for some time, but Director French's tremendous work and leadership to date really should be appreciated and recognized, and I'm really grateful to Shane for that. Department heads and staff that are responsible for uploading content were also called on to conduct through a review of their pages. And as a result, we've, you know, culled down, in part with the partnership of our Civic Plus contractors, culled down the number of pages. And you'll also notice that on the upper navigation section here under departments, we have, this is now kind of a more standardized navigation that you'll see with many government websites, where you can go straight to departments and other county functions and access it from that top menu functionality. So department heads and staff have been helping with that calling process, but it is still ongoing. But we do, again, want to recognize that all of the work to date, which is not necessarily a regular part of some of the department heads and staff's workload, has been considerable. We want to thank them for their very noteworthy efforts so far and look forward to partnering with them in the coming days and weeks to make our web content even better. And also, I'd be remiss to not mention the great contributions to the design elements of the webpage from Chair Crandall, Supervisor Sabatier, our County Administrative Officer, Susan Parker, and Assistant County Administrative Officer Stephen Carter, who all provided invaluable input as we went through the redesign process. So again, the website is now live in the redesigned Civic Plus-supported format. There will be continued changes to the website in the coming days and weeks, and I imagine we'll probably come back and provide some updates as that process unfolds. But we're just really excited for this newly redesigned site to be live, for people to have the opportunity to see the design work that's been ongoing. And it is much easier with this content management system than our previous solution for departments and staff to update content. So we'll see more current, more refreshed content on our webpages. We can expect that moving forward. So just want to, again, thank everyone that's been involved to this date, and thank you, board members, for the opportunity to present this morning.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm wondering if Mr. Rothstein can scroll down a little bit more, just to show at least the rest of the front page, because I think, number one, the news updates are definitely a good thing to highlight. That's now front and center, rather than having to scroll down as we had to do before. That way, any new information we want to directly get to the public as quickly as possible is always going to be seen right away. And then further on down, you have the calendar of events, both for events and for meetings, again, easily accessible, rather than having to click around and find it. One of the key tasks was trying to reduce the number of clicks in order to get to your final destination on the website. Obviously, having a website that was, that had a certain age, and in the internet, things age quickly, we are now a little bit more up to date with what's expected of a website navigation. And do appreciate the work that went into this. I think it looks a whole lot better than it did. I'm sure there's going to be some kinks to iron out, because there's so many different pages to review and look over. But I know every department had a point person that did look over each department's site, and looking forward to using this and hearing back from the public about it. And also, of course, Mr. Rothstein didn't mention this, because it's himself, but thank you to Matthew as well for his addition to it. I know that we all provided feedback, and I would say that your feedback, Mr. Rothstein, was more lengthy than most others.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you again, Mr. Rothstein. The biggest thing is that there's been a lot of concern in the county about our website, and we've been telling them it's coming, and there's going to be enhancement to it, and here it is. And so thanks again. Thank you to the IT department and the folks involved with enhancing this. So, yeah. Any other comments from the board? All right, open it up to the public if there's anyone that wants to comment on this presentation. Not seeing any, so I'll look on Zoom. I don't see any hands up either, so I'll bring it back to the board, and this is a presentation, so Supervisor Simon?
Just one comment. If we're asked about questions from the public, it has changed. Someone's been on there for thirty years, and they're like, hey, you guys changed the website. Who do we send? Where do we send them to? Do we send it to Shane or Admin Office, or someone has a question?
Yeah, well, it would likely depend on the nature of the question. If somebody is trying to access a service, then the departments that have been responsible for those services will still be responsible to make sure that they are accessible via our webpages, and will also want to be aware of any issues that people are encountering. So that would be my recommendation, is that if a member of the public can identify the department that they would be seeking a service from, for example, then to still follow through in the normal way of contacting that department. And if you have any question as to who may be responsible for an area of the webpage, you're more than welcome to contact our office, absolutely, the administrative office.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close this item. Thank you again, and we'll go ahead and move on from there.
Thank you.
All right. Nine twenty-five, so we still have five minutes for the other recommendations. Susan? Yep.
Nine?
Five nine.
Five nine?
That should be pretty quick.
Okay, five nine. Adopt resolution expressing support for the Lower Lake Light Parade and Street Fair and temporarily authorizing a road closure prohibiting parking and authorizing removal of vehicles and ordering posting of signs. And I think, let's see. Scott, do we need Scott for this? Scott Daleon?
We pulled it, right?
Yeah.
So what do we pull it for?
Oh, there's Scott.
There is a corrected version of the resolution.
Director Daleon, I see you on. I didn't, just wanted to make sure and see if you had anything to add to this, or...
No, we just, we modified the resolution, corrected a couple of things, and we just have a corrected version down there for you.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Is there anything else to add? No? All right. Anything from the board? So I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, resolution is passed. So we'll move on to five point...
And...
Just clarification on that, I guess. I want to make sure I get, I need to, do I need to add in corrected in my motion? Apologize, Mr. Chair.
No worries.
It appears the one that's in front of us is the corrected version, so I think you're fine, sir.
Because I've got two on here.
Oh, you're right, there is two.
There's two, there's the Lower Lake Lights Parade, and then the bottom one says Lower Lake Lights Parade, two thousand and twenty-two, corrected. So I didn't really...
For clarity's sake, you may want to amend, just that is the corrected version.
Do we have to reopen it? Do I have to rescind my motion?
I think you can just correct it and revote.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add, I'd like to offer the corrected resolution.
All right. The corrected resolution has been offered. Johanna?
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
And just real quick, sorry for not speaking early. I do want to thank Director Daleon. There were some things on there that I was reading and just didn't quite make sense to me as to where the cutoff was for intersections, and wasn't sure if it was, because things have changed ever since the Redwood Credit Union has shown up over there. The parades used to start right on Main Street and go down Main Street, and now it takes a whole different format. So I was reading things that I wasn't unsure about, and it looks like things got changed, and I appreciate it, Mr. Daleon.
All right. So that item, we'll close. We'll move on to five point two. Adopt resolution, amending resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash one nineteen, establishing position allocations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. Budget unit number one zero one two, Administrative Office and CAO Parker.
Yes, I will actually defer to Supervisor Sabatier, since he had some questions and concerns related to this item, which I think can be easily remedied. And Pam Samick, HR Director, is also available for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. So I was looking at the position allocations that are currently stated for that department, and right now, there's a separation between the Chief County Administrative Officer and the Deputy County Administrative Officers. But within the resolution, it combines both those positions, which a Chief County Administrative Officer is different than the Deputy County Administrative Officer, one or two. And now it says that there's four allocations for any of those three positions. In speaking with CAO Parker, the intention is always going to, at this moment in time, is always to have one Chief County Administrative Officer, so I'd like to segregate that out into its own category. That way, we understand what we're budgeting and what allocations we're creating, and then she has the flexibility of Deputy County Administrative Officer, one, two, not one, two chief. So one allocation for Chief County Administrative Officer and three allocations for Deputy County Administrative Officer, one, two. I think that's the correct correction.
Okay.
Okay, I'm in agreement.
All right, if there's nothing else from staff or the board, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on five point two? All right, not hearing any. I'll bring it back to us. Pam, did you have anything to add to this? I see you online.
No, I'm just here for moral support.
No, I'm just here for moral support.
We appreciate that. All right, so with that, looking for action.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution with the amendments as stated.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, we are at our 6.3. Public hearing request for hearing appeal by Thomas D. Humphrey, property owner, 13231 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APN number 035-412-16. With that, we will give the floor to Director Maria Turner and Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo.
Get used to it.
I'm just glad I didn't make the mistake of saying deputy. I, yeah, sorry.
Good morning. Maria Turner, Director, Community Development. I will turn the microphone over to our Code Enforcement Manager, who will give the presentation today.
All right. Right.
After, after we get sworn in.
Thank you for remembering that. So if there's anybody in the public or that's here on behalf of this item or on Zoom, if you can turn your camera on on Zoom and raise your right hand. That way, when Johanna conducts the swear-in, we can move forward from there.
All right, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here on behalf of this item?
You gotta swear.
Did you guys swear in? Are you going to make comments on this item?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
I'm not sure how this works.
Oh, it's okay, so just stand and raise your right hand, and Johanna will conduct the rule call.
All right, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good morning to the board. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division within the Community Development Department. Today, we're here in regards to a request for a hearing made in regards to a notice of nuisance in order to abate and a notice of violation regarding the property at 13231 Second Street in Clear Lake Oaks. Just for the record, we do have the Code Enforcement Officer who was assigned and handled the matter directly. Officer Christopher Collins in the room in case he needs to testify to any photos or any statements or admissions made to him, or if you need more specific or direct information, he can provide some clarity based upon his recollection. Pursuant to the Lake County Code, when after a notice of nuisance is issued, the property owners or an interested party has the right to request a hearing, or better known as an appeal. In this matter, Thomas Humphrey, the property owner, requested an appeal regard to a notice of nuisance, order to abate, and a notice of violation that was issued for the property 13231 Second Street in Clear Lake Oaks. As part of due process, we did provide a hearing notice and gave him constructive notice that there will be a hearing on today's date. It was provided within the statutory framework required. The hearing request was received from Thomas Humphrey. Just for the record, I'll read the reason provided. Mr. Humphrey states in his hearing request form, "I am a hobbyist who participates and puts on events at Lakeport Speedway. I also support as many as 10 others who live in Lake County who participate in events at Lakeport Speedway. I've been participating at the Speedway for over 20 years from this property. I am not a nuisance. I have provided entertainment for the residents of Lake County for over 20 years." As always, we'd like to give context and provide further information regarding the property. The property is owned by two people. According to county records, Thomas D. Humphrey has 50% ownership. Deborah Humphrey has 50% ownership. It is zoned as an R1 single-family residential property. There is a single-family dwelling located on the property. Here you can see a Google image. If you could see right in here, this is the property in question. And here's a closer version of that property. This property right here we'll be speaking about later, so please do not conflate the two. The property that we're interested in is this one right here with the home on it. So a notice of nuisance in order to abate and a notice of violation were issued against the property. Our officers cited violations in Chapter 13 for garbage rubbish, refuse, or waste matter, abandoned, dismantled, wrecked, or inoperable vehicles or parts thereof on the property, outdoor storage not maintained in compliance with Chapter 21, the zoning ordinance, outdoor storage of materials on a parcel less than one acre that exceed the 100 square foot aggregate area that's allowed, and also storage not properly screened from public view or from neighboring properties, and also storage that was kept in the required front setback. So usually, it's about 20, 25 feet in from the property line, 40, 45 feet from the center of the street. So here are the photos taken of the property 13231 Second Street. Here's, you can see our notices were posted in a conspicuous place for the property owner or the occupant to see or recognize the notices. And as you can see on the left photo, this is in the front yard area. There's miscellaneous items, material, machinery, equipment that's been stored in public view within the front setback for more than 30 days. So we would consider this to be storage on a permanent basis, not a temporary basis. The picture on the left, there's more storage. You can see on the right there, on the picture on the right, you can see wood and other materials being stored out in the front area that's open for public view, and it's been there for some time, what we would consider a permanent basis. Again, on the left, you can see miscellaneous items scattered throughout. On the right, you can see equipment, boards. Again, this is all in the front yard area. Staff recommends the board uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate and direct the property owner to voluntarily abate the existing violations within a certain time made certain as determined by the board. If compliance is not obtained by the responsible party, we're requesting staff direct, or the board to direct staff to move forward with the nuisance abatement procedures. And I just want to add some clarification here. Our processes are to serve two notices. This is the first notice that has been appealed, so we do have further concerns, given that this is in the Roadmap Task Force area. I think I do need to say for that record, this property is in the Roadmap Task Force area. Soon as we see a violation, we try to get the ball rolling and put those notices on there to get these properties cleaned up as soon as possible. We do have concerns there may be further issues located in the back of the property, and we will be pursuing that with the property owner to inspect those issues and determine the full extent and scope, so that when we prepare our second notice, we can have all of the full information. So that way, if we do have to abate it, we understand the extent and scope and the issues that will need to be abated. At this time, that concludes my presentation for this property.
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah? Sir, would you like to come up and...
Yeah.
All right.
To the voting?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, basically, I state my name or...
Yes, please state your name.
Thomas Humphrey.
All right.
Yeah, I've been here for 20 years, participating at the racetrack. I'll admit, I do need to do some cleanup. You know, it's 20 years' worth of stuff. I did the motorsports show at the fair this year on Saturday. I have a letter of support from the Fair Board that I can email you. It's on my phone, so I'm not really sure how to get that to you. I've also, the second property that we're talking about, which we'll get to though, that one I've kind of cleaned up the front. I can clean up, but I'm always going to be in violation as long as I'm participating at that track at the level that I, that I am. And I'm, they act, the Fair Board wants me to actually take on more of a role with the motorsports entertainment on Friday and Saturday, which they plan on me doing this year. But I will not be able to do that under these, you know, unless we can figure out some kind of a compromise or some way for me to do that. I have obtained a commercial storage yard now. It's costing me a lot of money. This is a hobby for me. This, for me to do the fair this year probably personally cost me and my son about $5,000 to do it. And I've been doing it for years. I have a lot of fans. I feel obligated to the people of the county now to continue as much as I can. But Marcus personally has made it clear to me that he's not happy with what I do, and, and basically, if I'm going to get shut down, I'm going to get shut down. I'd like to continue. The problem with the commercial yard that I have is I can't keep anything valuable there. And he's right, behind the fence, I have motors, I have transmissions, I have rear ends, I have sheet metal. I support a lot of different levels at that track. Bombers, there's different classes. I'm that guy, you know? And I mean, if I could, if I could find a situation where I could live, work, that would probably be ideal, or, you know, it's not work, it's a hobby. But like I said, unfortunately, I can't keep anything valuable at that yard. It will be stolen or vandalized, and that's just life, I think, in today's world. So I'm not really sure how we can fix this. If, Mark, ever since Marcus started with Code Enforcement, he comes by, he's told me on many occasions that he doesn't like what I do and has no interest in the Shark Car or any, you know, anything to that matter. I run the Shark Car at the boat races. It's the biggest thing that I do personally. But I support about 10 other boat race cars, as well as other bombers and other divisions, you know, you know, at that track.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You say, you said it's a hobby. Is this something you do full-time, though, even though?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, every moment I get, basically, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just asking. And is this something that's sponsored? I mean, I, no, no, okay.
Actually, I don't really have any sponsors. At one point, Robinson's Rancheria wanted to kind of sponsor me, but I kind of, I like to stay independent and, you know, that's just the way I like to do things, you know?
Okay. I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, yeah.
Any other questions?
Are you guys, personally, are any of you aware of the Shark Car or the boat races?
I think we talked at the town hall before.
Yeah, I talked to you before, and Bruno, you know. And you lived down the street from the Odell's at one point in Clear Lake. So I know you kind of understand a little bit, but, and that's a totally different thing than what I do. What I do is a lot, you know, destruction derby. We do all that stuff. And unfortunately, it's hard to find. And a lot of cars that I would like to pick up and use for these events, Code Enforcement winds up, you know, the county winds up paying to get rid of. And I understand that we have to maintain a certain level, you know, of stuff in the county, but, you know, it's getting harder and harder to do these kinds of shows, you know?
Just a quick question before I give the floor to Supervisor Sabatier. So you would, you use vehicles that are dilapidated and just kind of like, okay?
Yeah, old cars, RVs. Actually, they want to do, I did an RV demolition derby at the fairgrounds years ago. They would like me to do another one, so I'm looking into that. One of the pictures you showed was a rear end out of one of those RVs that I, you know, I personally, and a lot of what I do too, I consider myself an environmentalist. I try to recycle everything. I have a hard time just taking stuff to the landfill. That landfill mountain is huge now in Clear Lake. And I, every time I have to bring something there, you know, crushes me, you know, but...
What happens to, after the race? What happens to the material that breaks down and all of that?
Yeah, everything is recycled. I use a dismantler in Sonoma County to get rid of everything, you know, that I have all the cars, tires, oil, they take everything from me down there, so. But, you know, the metal all gets recycled. Unfortunately, the boats from the boat races, there's no way to recycle that. Those go to the landfill, but they're going to wind up there anyway, you know? And I pick up boats, you know, all over the county, and clearly. I do a lot of stuff in Clear Lake, and my yard actually is in Clear Lake, so, but...
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I'm not sure how we can solve this. I don't think we can solve this today. Maybe I can come back before the board, and we can try to figure something out, you know? But I'm going to leave it up to you guys.
So I apologize for laughing, but...
No, you can laugh.
Those boats, there's nothing left by the time the boat races are over. So there's no recycling, it's pieces.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if they could do something with the pieces of fiberglass, that'd be great, but unfortunately, they don't.
No, the boat races are a unique experience that I hope most people understand and have been to. Jam-packed, I support what you do over there, and I would love to see it keep going. The problem I have is you're in a residential 1 area, and just the fact that you mentioned you have engines and transmissions, there's very specific specifications for like a mechanic's shop to ensure that oils and everything else don't accidentally get spilled in the terrain, and so that it doesn't have any impact on the neighboring areas or just the environment as a whole.
Right.
And I'm not sure that those things are there. And 100%, I'm sure that that's not an appropriate use for that area for an R1.
Right.
So I love the fact that you have a commercial yard. We got to figure out how to make sure that you can utilize that so you can clear out your stuff. But I think the appeal that we're dealing with today is a slightly separate thing. I will say, on a separate note, I have called the fairgrounds because I'd love for them to help you out. I don't want you to be done with what you do, but we do need you to clean up your area in that residential area. Your community needs it, your neighbors need it. Whether they support your racing or not, it's nice to have a clean neighborhood and stuff like that.
I will agree. A lot of, a lot of things right now, I had a shop in Clear Lake that I lost to marijuana, you know, cultivation. A lot of the marijuana growers have come into the commercial areas and taken a lot of warehouse space that I could have used. And it was hard for me to get this yard, but, you know, we did get one, and hopefully, I can keep it for a while. But when I left that shop in Clear Lake that I had been across from Safeway for years, you know, it was a lot of stuff there that I had to, I had no choice but to bring it to my house, you know? But I worked out of that shop for a long time. My, my, my wife, I'm separated from now, we had a towing business in Clear Lake where we dealt with junk cars. So that helped kind of support my hobby in a way, but now we don't have that anymore, you know, so. But anyway, yeah, hopefully, I know today, this is not really, I, I, part of the reason I'm here is being called a nuisance, you know? That, that hurts, you know? The largest attended day of the fair is the boat race day, and that, that show has been entirely me for a lot of years. And in no way am I a nuisance to Lake County. I understand that we have rules and we have, you know, codes to help keep, you know, things from getting out of control. There are properties that Marcus is well aware of that need to be addressed, you know, and people are not respecting the environment, doing things they shouldn't be doing. But I'm not that guy, and I kind of resent being lumped into that, you know? And I, and I, you know, I, like I said, I've had, I've been operating, Code Enforcement has been to my house before. When they understand what's going on, that it's not a place where people just dump cars or whatever, or, you know, it's just a junkyard, an illegal junkyard, you know, then they've kind of given me a little, you know, let me pass. But that, that day is now, since Marcus has been in charge, has been at an end, or, you know? And I know the new program, obviously, that's part of it. But personally, you've made it clear to me that you do not like what I do, and, and that's fine. But that's a, that's one person's opinion. Unfortunately, his job, you know, plays a big role in that, but...
I'll make one final comment. I know I spoke with Marcus yesterday. Marcus is doing exactly what we've asked him to do, which is to hold everyone across the board on the same standard. Because if we allow one place to be like your place, then that means we have to allow every place to be like your place.
I mean, I think we need to figure out something, because I'm not the only person. There's, there's, there's a lot of other people like me. There's a lot of people that give up on the racetrack because of that. We have this racetrack, it's a great facility for as long as we're allowed to do it, you know? I have plans to increase, I mean, right now, we have, you know, 3,000 people. We can do 6,000 people easily, I think. And I'd like to have some kind of a, bring more and more people in the Lake County, basically, around that racetrack. That's my goal, and I'm working with other promoters and stuff to kind of do that. But again, I understand why we're here today, and I just hope that maybe there's some way that, beyond this hearing today, that we can come to some kind of a, you know, way for me to continue. Because it's only benefiting the county, you know, in my opinion. And I do have a lot of people that support what I do, and I don't want to disappoint them, you know? And I'd like to continue. My son wants to continue with what I do, unfortunately. what I do, unfortunately, for him. I told him, this is, you know, you have so much stuff, believe me, this is one thing against me. I, you know, I have, I have other, other things that also work against this. And this is a hobby, this is something that costs me money. I don't make money doing this, it's not a business. There's no way to make money doing this, so. And I, I think we all have hobbies, we all have things that we enjoy doing. I'm sure each of you have a hobby. If someone were to come to you and tell you, hey, you can't do your hobby anymore, it's hard, you know? But again, I'm not a kayaker, or I'm not, you know, a windsurfer, you know. Unfortunately, what I do is a little extreme, you know?
All right. All right, so with that, did you have any comments or?
I'd just like to state for the record that we don't go after anybody personally, it's the property, and we don't label anybody. No one should take the notice of nuisance as that being a character description. The issues occurring on the property are declared by statute to be a nuisance, so it's not personal. Again, we want to clean these properties up for the benefit of the community, and also for the individuals that live on that property itself, so they have a better quality of life.
All right. Is there anyone else that you would like to have speak?
No, we're...
Okay. Superintendent Savati?
I just want to be very clear. We got two on here. This is for the front yard photos and stuff we saw. And I just want to back up, you know, what Marcus said. This is something we've asked as a board to move forward with, you know, especially in the Clear Lake Oaks area, for the task force to go in there and look at it. If you just look at the site photos or the site map, looks like there's a, I'm not talking, just looking at it, there are a few other places around that area.
Yeah.
You know, it seems to be kind of growing. It may not just be because your spot's there, but it looks like there's other spots around it, too. So I think we're in the right area. I agree. The nuisance word is just for the property, not for the individual. We've all been to the boat races, they are very unique, you know, to Lake County. It's really cool. I think everyone should see it that lives here, take their kids. The Shark Car is a big part of that, so.
Thank you.
You know, I, you know, I've seen it, but, you know, there's those lines drawn on, you know, areas where it can be done. Hopefully, that yard you found in Clear Lake will help, help, help you continue doing it, but we do have to address these issues today with the two properties we're going to talk about, starting with this one, so.
Thank you.
Just want to make that very clear.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understand.
It's not, it's not on you, and if you feel like that, I hope it, hope it changes after today, even after any of the decisions that we make.
All right. So is there anyone else in the chambers that'd like to speak on this? All right. I'll look online, I don't see anyone. I don't think anyone swore in, so I'll go ahead and...
No hands.
No hands, and close that part of it, public input, and come back to the board. It's in my district, so, yeah, it's in my district, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the appeal by Thomas D. Humphrey, property owner at 13231 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, for APN number 03541216.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Superintendent Savati?
I think there were some questions that you were asking us about timeline.
Well, in the past, the board has granted a period of time to correct the issue. That's why I stated in my presentation that we will go, our process is to issue a second notice and to understand the full extent and the scope of what's occurring on the full property, the entire property. You know, we do have every confidence that Mr. Humphrey will be a good citizen and look to abate those issues, but right now, there are still concerns in the backyard area. And kind of going to the environmental issues, we do have photos of car batteries being on the ground, so we want to make sure any of those environmental issues are not present, and if there are already batteries on the ground, that they're properly addressed and not, or they have a containment or some kind of buffer between them and the ground, because that's an issue. And there's also tires on the ground, too, that could be of environmental concern. Again, this property is in close proximity to Clear Lake.
Did you want to readdress your motion?
I have a question on, typically, we get appeals upon assessment or appeals upon fines or things like that. Here, we're in the early stages. What would be your natural timeline that you would have if this was not appealed?
So the correction period for the notices that we're discussing here today have expired, so our next process would be to issue a new notice of order, a notice of nuisance in order to abate, which would give them another 30 days to correct the issues. But we need to also, hopefully, we can speak to Mr. Humphrey, he'll give us consent to inspect the full property. If not, then we have to go the inspection warrant route. I'm not prepared to issue that notice, do we understand the full extent? Because again, you know, time is of the essence, we want to capture these things and make sure we have a full, a bulletproof notice, so that way, if we do have to abate, everything's captured and it's done properly.
All right, one second, I'm gonna, Ms. Grant?
Yeah, I just wanted to state, I'm not sure about what action's being discussed about getting a warrant and going on further. There may be additional violations, but those aren't the subject of the hearing that's in front of your board today. And the board is making an order today that relates to just these. So I can tell you that historically, your board normally allows a 30-day timeframe unless your board finds that there are issues that require a more immediate response from the property owner. And simply, when you've denied the appeal, which this is essentially a request for a hearing on the issue of the abatement, and by denying it, you're confirming and affirming the notice of abatement, and you can defer enforcement of that order for a 30-day period or a period of your board's determination
Do that.
to allow the property owner to take the appropriate action as to the property. But it would only go as to what's before your board today, so...
And the new findings would be a new notice of violation?
A whole new process, because due process is quite particular.
So, if I could, I will have the current violations cleaned up. I've already, there's actually four, one, two, there's four properties involved here. Two have already been cleaned up. The, there's a third vacant lot that we will have done in 30 days, if that, I'd like more time if I could.
But right now, we're only speaking about this, the big one with the house.
Well, my house right there, the batteries, there were no batteries on the ground at that house, at my house. The lot next door, the second one we're here today about, there's where the batteries were, I believe. Do you have pictures of the batteries on the...
I do have pictures.
But we'll get to the...
We'll get to the next one.
We're gonna take care of this one first.
No, I know, but at 13231, you have pictures of batteries on the ground. You don't, do you?
I believe there were pictures on the, so the junk is conflated almost where it's kind of becoming one mass. So if it's not this property, it would be the neighboring property.
Let me just say this, tires, batteries, anything that's of concern are already, have already been dealt with, or if not, will be dealt with in 30 days.
Okay.
Just so you know that.
Thank you.
Bruno knows, I mean, I've cleaned up other properties in Clear Lake. I mean, I...
Sir, okay, we, we, we...
Okay.
And so, Ms. Grant?
And there are, I should have added, and I apologize, your board has also used a substantial compliance determination if after 30 days the department determines substantial compliance. The flexibility is always your board as to how you want to fashion the order you make today.
All right. Did you want, go ahead, Superintendent Savati?
I'd like to ask you, Chair, what your thoughts are on what you would like for timelines? If we ask to continue with just a normal 30-day timeline, if you'd like to extend that, or if you'd like to look at...
Giving more time?
If there's significant progress, that more time can be, I'm looking towards you, since it's in your district, as to what you think would be the best to advise.
Well, I think what Ms. Grant had mentioned about, in the realm of this being a hearing request for an appeal, giving that specific time possibly to Mr.?
Mr. Humphrey.
Yeah, Mr. Humphrey's, and possibly giving him a little more, like if there is evidence of the property being taken care of, giving a little more time. I would be fine with that.
In the code, if they do make substantial progress, we do have the discretion to give them 30 more days, so that is something that's stated in the code.
Okay. But I'm fine with that, all right?
So 30 days, if there's significant progress, additional time?
Right.
Okay.
That's what I heard from Ms. Grant when she was explaining it.
So do we need to do a new motion on that?
Yes.
So I will amend my motion to deny the appea... Is that okay, too? Okay. I saw you moving, so I stopped.
Good job.
I amend my motion to deny the appeal by Thomas D. Humphrey, property owner 13231 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, for APN number 03541216, and request a 30-day notice to complete the abatement. If significant progress has been made, that it is up to the discretion of the code enforcement officer to add additional days.
Right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. All right. With that, we will move on to our 6.4 Public Hearing Request for Hearing Appeal by Thomas D. Humphrey for 13221. Yeah, Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APN number 035412-15, and I'll give the floor to Community Development Director. Anthony, we do a swear-in, yeah, we do another swear-in, formalities. Ms. Grant?
Actually, since all parties have been sworn in for the prior, in case your board can just simply make a statement that the...
Okay. All right, so we'll make a statement that parties involved have already made a swear-in, so we'll go ahead and move forward with this, and since it's done prior to this. Go ahead.
All right.
If I can ask you to share the screen? You have it up on the overhead, but it's not on Zoom.
I might need a little help with that.
If you can click on Zoom, on the bottom?
I'll let the expert handle it.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, we are here again for another hearing request or an appeal to a notice of nuisance in order to abate, and a notice of violation issued for 13221 Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California. Not to be, I don't think we need to be redundant here pursuant to Lake County Code. After the issue of a notice of nuisance in order to abate, a request for an hearing can be made. In this case, the request was made by Thomas Humphrey. He is the appellant or an interested party, he is not the property owner. Again, we did provide him a hearing notice, we met the statutory requirements, providing that hearing notice so that there is adequate time for him to appear. Again, for the record, I'll just state the reason provided for the hearing request. I'm a hobbyist who participates and puts on events at Lakeport Speedway. I also support as many as 10 others who live in Lake County who participate in events of, at Lake County or Lakeport Speedway. I've been participating at the Speedway for over 20 years from this property. I am not a nuisance. I've provided entertainment for the residents of Lake County for over 20 years. This property is a neighboring property to the one that we just discussed prior. It is a Zoned R1 Single Family Residential. It is a vacant lot. There are no improvements. It has not met its primary purpose of having a single family dwelling on the property. Here, you can see a panned-out image of the property, an aerial from Google Earth. And here's a closer image, and you can see there's a lot of congestion occurring at this property here. So a notice of nuisance in order to abate and a notice of violation were issued. We, the code officer cited a violation of Lake County Code, Chapter 21, Article 10, where the property has not met the primary purpose of having a single dwelling on the property. It should be a vacant lot until it's met its primary purposes, and then you can have all the accessory uses. They, we also cited Chapter 21, Article 68 regarding residential accessory uses, and Article 41, or Chapter 21, Article 41, Section 41.12, Subdivision B, Subdivision 6, of open storage of any and opable vehicle on the property. I do want to reiterate, the main violation here is the fact that they're storing items, vehicles, materials, storage in general on a property that hasn't met its primary zoning purpose first. You have to meet that primary purpose, then you can have the accessory uses that come with it allowed by the zoning ordinance. Here is the property. Again, this is next door to the property we just discussed. As you can see on the left, there is a vehicle that would be considered dismantled or wrecked. There's miscellaneous items. On the photo on the right, you could see more issues being stored on the property, vehicles, equipment, trailers. On the left here, you can see, this is, again, this is from the front, this is from the street view. This is what the community can see. As on the left, you have miscellaneous items. On the right, you can see tires and a wrecked vehicle there. Another photo here, on the right over here is another photo of items being stored. And then there's a trailer. And, but this time, again, staff recommends the board uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate, direct the property owner to voluntarily abate the existing violations within a time made certain as determined by the board. If compliance is not attained, direct staff to move forward with the nuisance abatement procedures. And so that concludes my presentation.
All right. Anything, any other questions?
Not at the moment.
All right.
I don't want to drag it out anymore, but, so that property, I'm in the purchase of, I was, I was an owner, I sold it. I'm in the purchase of buying it back, or in the process of buying it back. And when I do, I'd like to combine it with 13231, the property next door. I'd like to build a garage there. For, I'm not going to be able to do that until I get everything cleaned up. I understand that, and I will clean up this property, so, just so you know.
I sure hope you get to that garage, that would be awesome.
Yeah, that would be nice, and, like I said, you know, I mean, you can see, you know, there's demolition derby cars, there's a lot of stuff, and cars for the future. I'm not really sure how this is going to work. I will give it my best. You know, there's, like I said, there's only so much I can store, you know, away from my place where, you know, it's at risk of being stolen. Not everything that I have, you know, there's a lot of new parts, carburetors that are super expensive, batteries, you know, fuel, they steal fuel out of the cars. I mean, even at my house, that happens a lot, so. But I do understand now that I do have to clean this up, and it will be cleaned up. As much time as you can give me, I appreciate it. And like I said, this property, I'm not the actual owner of it yet, but I am in contact with the owner, and I should be the owner of it by the end of the year at the most, probably maybe another month at the most. We just have some paperwork to finalize and some stuff, so.
All right. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or anything to add? Ms. Grant?
Just a couple of things. So the notice, this, the individuals who have appealed aren't the property owners, but staff can attest to the fact that the actual property owner was duly given notice.
We sent a notice based on our information with county records, so we did mail the notice, the notice of nuisance in order to abate, notice of violation, to the information available with county records, and then the hearing request also references the property owners that are reflected on title.
Okay, that's good. The only other thing I would point out, that there's a reference to a violation of Section 2110.1, and 10.1 states the purpose to establish areas for individual residential dwelling units at relatively low densities where the traditional neighborhood character of single-family units prevail. That's the purpose of the regulation, it's not the purpose of the property owner. So I'm not real clear on how the property owner has violated an ordinance section that just speaks to the reason it exists. So your board may want to consider, that one may not be applicable as you move forward to, to take action on the notice of nuisance in order to abate.
Oh, the 2110, okay. Superintendent Savati?
Am I then understanding that Section 41.12B6 is basically the violation that you were stating that violates the fact that there's no primary use?
Well...
And so that would cover that by leaving that?
So 10.1, that's usually the type, the code that we cite as the primary purpose for the property, for individual residential dwellings on the property. So my understanding of the zoning ordinance is you have to meet that prong or that purpose first, then you get the storage, the accessory. And so if you haven't met that purpose, then you cannot have accessory or storage on the property. Storage is an accessory subordinate or secondary use. If there's a better way to cite these violations, obviously, we'll get with county council and seek that guidance and make sure we get the proper, but...
Okay.
And what I just want to make sure is, you're stating that the issue is storage?
Storage by not...
And 41.12 covers that, correct?
If, well, again, 41.12 cannot happen until you have a dwelling on...
But that's the violation. 10.1 is kind of saying you're in violation for not having a house, which at that point is...
Ms. Grant?
The regulations in Article 10 speak for themselves, so it may seem, it may seem picky-hewn, but it actually isn't, because it's, it's not, it's not quite the same as how they're stating it. So I would just suggest that Article 10 establishes the appropriate use of the property. The property owner's actions establish the violations as to that appropriate use. You see what I mean?
Yes. Okay. And so I think we closed public input, and if there's... And so I think we closed public input, and if there's, uh, any other comments from the board or?
No.
Yeah, you got it right last time, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I will, I will make a statement, um, even though I will be, uh, making a motion to deny the appeal today, um, I do want to say to Mr. Humphrey, I, I am making phone calls, I want Clear Lake to be able to possibly help you. If it's somewhere else that you get the help, that's awesome, but you and I need to communicate outside of this, uh, so I could try to make sure and help you out with, uh, continuing what you do in a better location where it's appropriate, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to deny the appeal by Thomas D. Humphrey for one, three, two, two, one, Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APN number zero, three, five, four, one, two, dash, one, five, with the amendment removing, uh, violation ten point one.
Second.
And, and, and continue with a thirty day notice with the discretion of the code enforcement officers to continue if there's significant progress, uh, to a later date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, we'll go ahead and entertain a break briefly, and, uh, come back after this. Let's say at ten fifteen. Okay, welcome back. Uh, it looks like we're covered our timed items. We'll move forward on to our seven point three, consideration of the award of bid number twenty-two, dash, thirty for the Hill Road Correctional Facility Tower Electronic Security System Upgrade Project in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to R and B Electronics Electrical Contracting and authorized Chair to sign the agreement and notice of award. With that, we have Lars Ewing here, Public Services Director.
Good morning, Board. Um, as was, was stated, what the, what is up for the board's consideration is the award of this, uh, the project. Uh, the, the project is, in, in summary, is a, an electronic security systems upgrade for the tower at the jail. Uh, it includes a, a variety of different components, um, uh, the majority of which are, are security electronics, as is stated in the, in the project title. It also includes, um, uh, associated cabinetry, uh, which I, I wanted to point that out specifically because that is the, the local, a, a local workforce component of this, um, in case there were any questions that, that arose from that, because the, the agenda did identify a local workforce participation component of this. So, uh, uh, we received one bid, um, uh, which was under the, uh, the estimated cost for the project, so, uh, hopefully, the, the board would, would approve this, and we can, we can move forward. The, the estimated time for the project, uh, they have ninety days to complete the project, and there's, there's no reason that we're aware of that they should, uh, extend beyond that. Um, I believe Captain Taylor is, is on, or at least I, I hope he is, if you have any questions operationally, um, but I can certainly answer any questions as it relates to the solicitation of the project.
All right. Any questions from board?
I, actually.
Go ahead.
My, my one question was just answered as far as timelines, because all I saw was that they had to, uh, uh, sign within ten days of our approval, but I didn't see what, uh, what the timeline for the project is, I appreciate that. And I know I reached out to you asking for the other bids, and now that I'm rereading, it was three people that showed up at the pre-bid, but only one bid that was submitted, so I had that number three stuck in my head, so I appreciate the clarification as well.
You bet.
You see Norm Taylor's online, I don't know if you wanted to add to this?
I'll leave it to me for a moment.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I, I asked him to attend, simply if he had any questions. I don't think he had anything, uh, of his own to add, but.
Okay. Uh, I'll open it up to the public, just in case, in the, in the meantime, uh, is there anybody from the public like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone or in the Zoom, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to award the contract for Hill, Hill Road Correctional Facility Tower Electronic Security Systems Upgrade Project in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to R and B Electronics Electrical Contracting and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement and notice of award.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. All right. That covers everything on the non-timed items, except for the weekly calendars. With that, is there a volunteer to go first?
Yeah.
We'll go with Supervisor Simon, then Supervisor Sabatier.
Looks like we're gonna finish early today, so I've already set up something with Matthew afterwards to talk about the RRA a little bit. Um, also have, uh, LAFCO tomorrow, and then, uh, after LAFCO, one P M., I have, uh, the Ava Authority Meeting. Thursday, I will be, uh, in South County. Uh, Friday, I have the C A O. at nine A M., we'll get back on track with that. I just set up a meeting with the gentleman in, at eleven A M., who was here for public comments, I have that set up, and, um, you know, we'll move right into the weekend, obviously, coming into, uh, the holiday next week, but we do have the R R A. meeting on the twenty-first, the C M A. reporting, uh, committee meeting, and then back here on the twenty-second.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Um, looks like I got a LAFCO meeting on the, on tomorrow with Supervisor Simon, as well as the A V. A., we'll be hanging out tomorrow. Um, first five commission also, I will be there, uh, since Supervisor Green is out of the county. And, uh, on Thursday, starting my day early with Judge's Breakfast, and then going to, I believe it's the C O. C. that I'm seeing on here. Uh, I seem to have multiple meetings happening all at the same time, uh, looks like there's also the I F. T., um, so I will have to figure out how we do that, since, uh, I know that, um, Supervisor Green, who is the primary for the C O. C. is also out of the county, so, um, let me get back to that. I have a C S. A. G. board meeting, that I'll be tuning in virtually at the, in the afternoon on Thursday, and then going to the city council meeting happening on the seventeenth. And on the eighteenth, uh, I have a meeting with special districts to look at some, um, possibilities of, uh, changes to the sewer system in District Two area, and also housing navigation, um, later that afternoon. I don't see anything over the weekend at this moment in time, uh, but I know that my kids will be off all of next week as we prepare for Thanksgiving week off, and, uh, meeting with our C A. O. on Monday, and preparing for a meeting that will happen on Tuesday. And, um, actually, let me, uh, go back a little bit, I'm sorry, um, last week, um, not much to update on. I know we had a Clean Water Act, um, meeting that I was able to, um, get into while I was still driving and in transit. Uh, I know that there's some, um, greater efforts in cleaning, making sure that our storm water that goes into our lake is as clean as possible, uh, that's the basic work behind the Clean Water Act program. Uh, we did talk about a little bit, uh, something that's been spoken about in the Solid Waste Task Force, uh, that also has to deal with this, which is how to deal with the illegal dumps and the hazardous materials that sometimes we find in illegal dumps. Uh, so that, that conversation kind of crossed over, uh, into the Clean Water Act program, uh, and I know that there is some work being done on bringing back to the board, uh, something about illegal dumping, and we'll see what that ordinance or what that policy looks like as it gets, uh, put together. Uh, also, the, uh, PEG Board meeting occurred yesterday, last night, um, in this chamber. Um, I've been selected as the Chair for that board, and I, uh, based on our conversations that we had during our budget hearings, uh, next week, I hope that we will be able to bring back, uh, an agreement, uh, and consider something between, uh, the county and PEG, and, uh, you'll see that when it pops up on the agenda. Uh, but I've been working on that over the past month between, uh, admin, and I also want to thank Ms. Grant for reviewing it, um, not specifically for PEG, but in preparation for it to pop up in the county to have to review it, so that worked out real well, and I appreciate all the help that I received, and, uh, excited about that conversation coming up next week. So that's, uh, what's been going on.
All right. So I'll update on a couple of things last week. I had a, uh, R C. R. C. Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee last week, where we finalized, uh, some verbiage and language for the legislation, uh, recommendations for R C. R. C. to assist, uh, the rural counties in regards to cannabis, and, um, we'll be submitting those this year. And, uh, big focus is illicit cannabis, um, and, and seeking funding in that area to ensure, um, all counties in the rural area can benefit from those. Uh, the other thing I think I'll mention is the, uh, Veterans Day event was a really successful event, uh, also did the Avenue of Flags on Friday, uh, at Upper Lake, that went pretty good, too. Um, I think another highlight I'll mention, I got a, um, email Friday from the, I think it's the EPA, um, I've been appointed as the U. S. Environmental Protection Agency's Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Committee. The term beginning, uh, actually, I think today is the deadline to turn it in, and I turned in the document accepting, I'm a representative for local government and tribal communities on the committee, and so that's a, that's, I think that's going to be a plus to help, and I think that I'll be reaching out to other counties. Uh, R C. R. C. had helped me with, uh, the application and, uh, encouraging me to do so, so that's a, it's going to be a, a plus. So, uh, we'll see how that goes, and, uh, I had, reading the, uh, the bylaws and all of that to get ready for it, uh, I think there's a, the first meeting will be in January, so they'll do an announcement pretty soon, uh, showing that, uh, was, uh, selected. Uh, let's see, um, tomorrow I have, let's see, the Worth meeting tomorrow, uh, Thursday is, I will be doing Firescape, uh, is it, uh, I think Frank Abley's putting that on over at Robinson Rancheria to discuss, uh, you know, fire, uh, in the community and different, uh, things of that nature. They're also going to have presentations, uh, in regard to that, so it's a workshop. The Board of Trustees for the Law Library, I'll have that as well, and then L A. F. in the evening. Uh, Friday, I'll be on a couple of calls with R C. R. C. in regards to, uh, a pre-meeting that we're looking to have here with the county, um, to talk about economic develop- uh, economic development ventures and whatnot, or assistance from that. Uh, Monday, C A. O. meeting, uh, with Susan Parker, and then back here on Tuesday for, for Supervisor's meeting. Um, I think that covers everything, we will go ahead and look at closed session from here. Uh, closed session, item eight point one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section five, four, five, six, point nine, D. One, City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Etta. And with that, we'll go into closed session, thank you very much. All right. Was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, I move to approve the settlement agreement and general release of claims in the matter of City of Clear Lake versus County of Lake Etta, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. With that, the meeting is adjourned.